Turn that on. The button right there and push.
Is it green?
Not yet.
There's the green light. Hello.
All right.
My name is Larissa Armalovski and I'm the Chair of TTA and we have Jenny Nyman, our Admin Coordinator with us today as well. Thank you for allowing us to come present to you today. Y'all should have our presentation in front of you and we'll just jump right in. On our first page here, we have our Vision, Mission and Value Statement. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I would just like to highlight under our values that we believe the trail should be a friendly place open for everyone regardless of ability or income. Our trails are free to access and that's why it's super important for us to be able to receive funding from organizations like the city. So thank you for giving us this opportunity. On the next page, we've got our 2023 Board Members and Staff. And then we've got our 2021-2026 Strategic Plan, just some highlights from that. Our Top Priority Five-Year Goals, we have some pretty big expenses coming up here in the next few years. Mainly our maintenance building that we are constructing for equipment. And then we also are looking at installing lighting, lighting, lighting at Wolverine Trailhead and creating a youth bike skills course. So those are some of our big plans. You can view the entire strategic plan on our website if you guys are interested in that. We put on a couple of youth programs. I don't know if you're familiar with those or not, but we have our Youth Ski Program and our Sprockets, which is our youth biking program, mountain biking. This year, we had 163 kids participate in our youth scheme. We had 18 head coaches and 20 assistant coaches and three subs. And then for our Sprockets that starts in June, we have 80 kids registered, 10 head coaches and 10 assistant coaches with 12 subs and all of our coaches and assistants are paid a stipend. So you can see we have a lot of kids and adults involved in our youth programs and we're pretty proud of those to be able to offer to the community. We have a list of our 2023 events. You can see we have activities going on year round, skiing and biking and running. Our Spook Night for the kiddos to come out and trick or treat on the trails. Our middle and high school skiing and running programs that access the trails. We've got a lot going on. So I'm going to let Jenny talk about the maintenance building. She's been our key person along with Tom Segerman, working on this project.
So for a recreational trails organization, we are so excited to have a building now. This is a building with utilities. We're going to have a restroom for volunteers. I cannot tell you how exciting it is for our volunteer groomers who spend 12 to 15 to sometimes 18 with the big snow dump this year, hours out grooming our trails to have a warm place to change their clothes, get the machines ready to go. And the really exciting thing about this maintenance building is it's going to give us the capacity to grow. We have been out of space in our current storage shed for years. The floor is rotting out. You know, we have the expected collection of Conex boxes as you do in Alaska. We're going to be able to consolidate all of that and have capacity to add to our grooming fleet and have the, the space to be able to work on machines. We're really excited about the capacity for efficiency and growth and grooming in the future. That was funded through Alaska State Parks. We were able to get a grant for Phase One and then we were able to match that with Erasmus and Tier Two Grants and some very kind support from local contractors, electricians, plumbers, solar panel installers, people have been really going out of their way to support this project, including the City Council here, who did a resolution of support, which really helped us get that grant to get that project going. So we're building the building this summer. That is our big goal for the year. And then going forward, the City of Soldatna's non-departmental grants, we've applied to maintenance costs on the trails. And I just wanted to give you kind of a highlight of what our revenues and expenses have been looking like over the years. So our operational budget is completely local supports, grant support from the City of Soldatna. We do get about 3,900 of revenue sharing through the borough from the state of Alaska. Beyond that, it is largely user-based. So we get voluntary, as Larissa said, our trails are always free and open to use, but we do ask membership donations. We get some donations above and beyond that as well. And then events and program registration fees. And the Hillcorp-directed donations, we were able to get some of those as well. And that was incredibly useful to kind of help buffer loss and revenue that we saw during COVID. So that's kind of helped us bridge the gap. Going forward though, we have identified a budget deficit that's widening in the coming years. As you all, I'm sure have seen on your end, costs, you know, for fuel and utilities and whatnot have gone up pretty substantially for Salteshi as well. So we've got a list of just our annual expenses as they have been in previous years. So snow removal, payroll and payroll costs, of course, program-related costs. And then the last page, I just highlighted some of the increases that we have seen just since fiscal year 2019 for us. So our maintenance costs have risen 125%. I was not a math major, but that is not a great number of increase. So largely that's fuel, of course, we all have felt that in our pocketbooks. We also have taken on responsibility for parking lot plowing at our Slycock Multi-Use Trailhead and we take care of our K Beach Trailhead as well. Sanitation is the other one. We have added more porta-potties and left them out and available for our trail users. Our trails are growing, trail use is growing and that is a, a good problem to have, but can be an expensive problem to have when you want to maintain your facility to the, the degree that is expected of this community. So we've really seen that in maintenance costs increase. And you know, if that was the only area of our budget that was increasing, we might be able to absorb that a little more easily. But insurance costs for us have also gone up 40%. Our personnel costs have gone up 48% and that is largely due to us adding a position this year. We are very excited to have a youth programs coordinator for the first time in our existence. So someone to have the continuity to manage our Sprocket Bike Program and our Youth Ski Program and our Spook Night event for the kids. We're really excited about adding that capacity to our program. And then maintenance utilities, insurance for our wonderful new building, which we are very excited about. But of course, as you all know, buildings need to be maintained and we are building that into our budget as well. So given all of that, we are requesting an additional $5,000 grant award from the City of Soldatna. We of course, very much appreciate any level of support that the city would see fit to give us in the past. It has been 15,000 a year. Our board is putting a lot of thought into ways to sustainably raise our revenue for, to cover our increased operational costs. We have, for instance, increased participation rates for some of our programs. But a priority for us, as Larissa mentioned, is to keep the trails accessible for everyone in the community. And that not only for us means having different, different difficulty levels of terrain. We have trails for beginners and kids and we have trails for those super speedy people, but financially accessible as well. We really want to maintain our family rates and program participation costs at a level that are, you know, easy for people to come and participate. So we are hopeful that the city would see fit to increase our grant amount. We really feel like that would allow us to maintain a level of sustainability without having to put that quite so much on the backs of our users, because really that is our other source of income. So we know we're limited in time, but we're happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Hutchins?
So I was wondering, what are some of the other grants that you go out for?
So no operational grants, as I'm sure you all in the grant world know, there's not many. We're, the City of Soldatna support is so rare and so appreciated because you do give us some operational help. But annual operating grants, we don't do really any of those, but we do development grants. So if we're doing a project, 90 to almost probably 100% of the main projects we've done at Salteshi have been grant-supported. A lot of those are through Alaska State Parks, the Recreational Trails Program. This, our maintenance building is the first time we've gotten Erasmus and Tier Two Grants. We've also recently got Erasmus and Tier One Grant to help us purchase some new lawn, yeah, lawn mowers. And then we just submitted a grant to the Kenai Peninsula Foundation to hopefully help us buy some trail counters so we can better see usage trends on the trail and then better prioritize what projects we're going after in the future. So we, we do try to seek out grant support, particularly for those larger development projects. And we, we have a pretty good track record of doing that.
Have you ever managed to get, I'm sure you have, money from 100 Women Who Care?
We, yep, so we did that two years ago and that went to signage. So our, our trails, we like to affectionately call them, some areas, the spaghetti bowl. You know, we have a very long, narrow strip of property from the borough and to maintain kind of that wilderness feel, we sort of dip and weave and circle back on each other. And it, it can be a little intimidating to figure out where you are when you're a new trail user. And the last thing we want is someone who is tired and cold and wet and does not want to accidentally have to go up one more dang hill on the way back to their car. So 100 Women Who Care allowed us to upgrade our signage throughout the entire trail system.
So that was two years ago?
I believe that was two years ago. We are going to be eligible soon, yes.
And you said you went to the Kenai Peninsula Foundation and, and how much was that grant?
Their grants limit, I believe, is 3,000. We requested a little less than that for counters and the software and equipment that goes with those. We haven't heard back yet. That was just the spring that we applied for that.
I know they're going to have a new run for the fall as well.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council, Mr. Carey?
If you have more of a comment, just say that you are an outstanding asset in the City of Soldatna. From my standpoint, you more than earn all that you get from us and I'm certainly happy to be of support for more.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would reiterate what Councilwoman Carey said. And thank you for all you do for not only our community, but really the users around the state that use the, the trail system. So in your list of events, I see it as local events. What sort of statewide and national events have you been able to attract or are you looking to bring to Salteshi?
So we host quite a few cross-country running and skiing events, you know, for, for our high school teams, burrows, and we've hosted state as well. We've also hosted Bech Cup, has then been the big, you know, kind of draw to the community and that's a more competitive level. You know, if you're looking to get yourself onto the Olympics track, you start with Bech Cup here locally. So, and that's a, that's a rotating commitment. We did that, not this year, but the previous year we hosted Bech Cup. And we need to think about doing that in the future. As, as fun as it was to have so many visitors and we got a lot of great response to, oh, these trails are so cool and they're so fun to ski. We found that Bech Cup was a little expensive for our local kids in particular to participate in and we didn't love that. So we're actually thinking as a board to maybe put on that level of professional capacity race and invite everyone from around the state, just as with Bech Cup. But that way we'd be able to set the admission price a little lower. So like our youth ski kids really felt kind of priced out of doing Bech Cup. And we were a little disappointed that we didn't see as many local kids participating in that in the past. But we do absolutely have the capacity to put on a real deal professional level race event and have at the trails.
And I would just like to add to the, what we have listed here is the Salteshi Backyard Ultra. That is actually something that Doug over at Kenai River Brewery started and he did that last year for the first time. He's doing it again this year. And this is a race that he actually is using to try to attract people from out of state to actually come to the trails and use this as a ticket to get into these like big national races that, I don't know, these big ultra races that people do that I, out of my league, but Doug is actually using that to try to attract people from out of the state to come up and do that and grow that race here.
And that's dirt bike racing?
That's the Salteshi Backyard Ultra.
And that's dirt bike?
That's running, I'm sorry. So basically-
Any, any dirt bike racing, because you do have the bikes, trails?
We're actually talking about holding a kind of large draw mountain bike race. So we have a, a mountain bike series that goes from June through October is the last race in that. And it, it tends to be a lot of local folks, although we are getting more and more Anchorage, Homer, Seward folks coming in. But we are thinking about, similar to our tour of Salteshi, kind of end of season marathon ski race, where we do get participation from across the state. We're thinking about having a kind of marathon style bike race as well this year. Again, to bring, you know, people in from outside to get them to ride Salteshi. And we are certainly on the map, but not everyone looks at the same maps unfortunately. So we want to be a little more visible.
Well, again, thank you for all you do. And last summer I parked over off of K Beach to go walk the trails and ended up at Skyview.
That'll happen.
Yeah. Phone, phone call to a friend, got me back to my car.
Any other questions, Mr. Cholson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just looking at the K Beach Trailhead, I know at one point the city was providing some in-kind support in addition to the financial support with just maintaining the, the restroom facilities there. Is that something we're still offering you? I'm not familiar with the current status on that support.
So last summer, for sure, the Parks and Rec Department did help us maintain that two bay outhouse, whatever the terminology is for that, which as you can imagine is incredibly helpful. Although I will say that we do have one volunteer who, bless her, will go clean that outhouse if needed outside of times that. So if, if you want an indication of how dedicated people are to maintaining Salteshi, someone who will voluntarily clean an outhouse is pretty impressive. And I, I would not, okay, I'm, I'm getting the nod. I would not want to speak for the Parks and Rec Department, but I'm getting an indication that there is the intention to help us maintain that outhouse again this summer, which is again, so appreciated.
Excellent. Well, I, I would just iterate again with everything that's been said. You know, the organization that Salteshi runs here is just a tremendous asset to our community. And having that just a couple of minutes away from downtown Soldatna is just so incredible. And I just thank you all for, you do to make that possible. And I absolutely do support your ask and, including the additional $5,000 as well.
Anything else? Just, I have a couple of comments here. Thank you for what you do for our community and not only the Soldatna community, but the surrounding community. And one other thing is if the council does approve an increase to the requested amount, it may only be a one-year increase. So, you know, just so that, keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next up is the Boys and Girls Club, the Kenai Peninsula, and they have 10 minutes for a presentation.
I'm not to talk too fast. I'm Sinead Wick and with me is Alice Nesbit and Michelle Hayman, about the crew. Together, we have about what, 36, 37 years with Boys and Girls Club. Very proud to be a part of it. What I've done for you is something we're kind of doing new, is separating the clubs from our overall report. So like in 2022, Boys and Girls Club took collectively 62,000 males and had a huge increase in our Soldatna clubhouse. And if you've been here for a while, Soldatna used to have a limit on our enrollment. So I don't think we ever seen like over 40 kids a day. Currently she's hitting over 90 in the summer. So she had a 48% increase in our enrollment. And if we weren't in the Soldatna Prep building, I don't know where we'd be able to house that many kids. So for her, we don't receive any federal funds for her programming nor her food program. So the meals that we served were out of pocket. We did receive an Alaska Community Foundation grant last summer and I just was notified we received it again this summer. And so 9,566 meals, we have 43,000 hours where we served youth. Our youth attended, 276 served total. We were open enough over 1,000 hours. And this is something new we're working on is looking at the actual cost per youth and per hour. So we take our total budget divided by how many kids and how many hours. And you put that in perspective, 970 per youth that we're serving. And she is expecting to see an increase already for her enrollment this summer. 260 per hour of programming and we want to extend the hours that we serve you. We want to go a little bit longer and on the weekends, that's a lofty goal. And we're looking at our scholarship Soldatna because it receives no federal funding. Most of our programs outside of the Key 19 Center receive grants and funds that cover the food and the programming. We have 38,000 in scholarships. And that for me is a, is a huge number for a Soldatna without any additional funding. We do really reach out for our in-kind partnerships, other entities and nonprofits that can bring in programming that are not affordable for our youth. Joe Rizzo and I both are collaborating again this summer. He received the same kind of grant he received last year. So we've got drama camps. Last year they were housed out of Soldatna Prep. We're looking at doing them in our new building this summer in our new gym. And then we worked with the school district, brought, provided two tutors for the whole month of June to work on unfinished learning, kind of like that summer slide, summer learning loss. And so we've been really fortunate to partner with everybody that we do. It's again, it's our ask is for 40,000. If you, there is, I did include, I'm working our proposal for FY24 budget. And even with all of our additional, the funds we receive from you, the funds that the parents, the, the enrollment cost and fees, and then additional from Alaska, that should be Credit Union One, that's the Community Foundation. And Arby's, we're still setting at a deficit of over $100,000. I wrap that up quickly. Just for overall, like Angela, what she's been able to do, she is a current director over in Soldatna Clubhouse. And they, with the programmings that we provide from STEM to cooking to social emotional learning to Power Hour, which is where they focus on getting their homework complete, making sure physical play happens consistently, that we know that helps with behavioral. I, I really love, absolutely love what we do. And Soldatna has seen an increase in not only enrollment, staff retain, retention. She's just done incredible things there and I just see it to continue and to grow. And I do believe we offer an incredible service for the families, especially families that need to work. And ultimately we'd like a teen center and a childcare center. Sorry, I'm quick.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah.
Mr. Cholson, just a couple of questions on the financials. I'm trying to find my notes here. Was $40,000 the ask last year or is this-
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the, I know the statistics you provided were specific to Soldatna, but the $161,000 deficit, is that specific to Soldatna programming?
106, that's just Soldatna, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for taking care of the people who are going to take care of us as we get older. So you're currently in former Soldatna Middle School. Are you going to stay there or what is the plan?
No, we're not.
When are you, when are you moving?
That's probably a million dollar question. We are preparing, ultimately, like I said, I've been here for 20 years and Soldatna needs its own building, very similar to what we're doing in Kenai. I do believe the Soldatna Prep is getting prepared to be occupied. And so I don't think we've been given a date. I do believe they would give us applicable amount of time. I think we'd be able, you know, I don't think it's going to be like you need to be out tomorrow. But ultimately, I'd like to find our forever, forever home in Soldatna in order for us to do a childcare center, a teen center. And you know, using what we're currently doing in Kenai as a business model, I believe we can be successful in that, but we don't. We are currently looking around Soldatna. I drove yesterday around the parks and the playgrounds and then just kind of started a perimeter of what's around that area. But no.
And you, you brought it up about the teen center. There used to be a teen center here that you had. What you currently have over at Soldatna Prep, is there anything for teens there at this time?
No, we are currently letting middle schoolers become our members without having a middle school program. To bring in an understanding is Jared in Key 19 Center is seeing 60 to 80 kids a day. Nationally speaking, that is not heard of right now. We are very, I want to say, he is very successful at the programming. The need is there and I think we have an understanding of how we can not only attract the teens, but bring in programming that, you know, is for something they're interested in. But no, right now we're supplying middle school, which is kind of where it starts. You get them in there and they want to stay when they're teens.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Saying none. Thank you very much for all you do for our youth in our community. They're the ones that are, that are our future and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is the Soldatna Area Senior Citizens. Do we have anyone from the Soldatna Area Senior Citizens here for a presentation? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay.
Did they indicate whether they were going to be here or not? Whoever can answer the question?
I notified all four groups. I did not hear anything back from the Senior Citizen Center, so.
Okay, moving on to the next item. Soldatna Historical Society.
I support the seniors. Alrighty. I'm Dale Bagley, President of the Museum and, and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. So for the first time since COVID, we did our February General Meeting. We have kind of canceled the, the Fall Fling and the General Membership Meeting for the last two and a half years. But we did our first one this February and had a good turnout. We have also, due to a number of reasons, not been going from May 15th to September 15th, but a more June 1st to the end of August. And this year we will resume May 15th to September 15th. Just want to thank the City of Soldatna for the beetle kill removal. It's been going all over the, the park area there. It's making an awful mess, but that's okay. It needed to happen and I'm, I'm glad it, I'm glad it is. We'll have our big cleanup here in May and we'll get it taken care of. One of the things, while they were there working, we actually had the roofs over our boats. The snow slid off one way and caused the roof to go, roofs came down. No damage to the boats. We've had Jake Denbrock in there doing work and he's done a great job. A lot of volunteer, a bunch of organizations have volunteered equipment there to help get the roofs off the boats. And in some ways, it's maybe a good thing, those roofs have been there for a long time. They were not done well to begin with. They were two, four by sixes that went straight down into the ground, which is an awful way of doing construction. There was no sheer, sheer beams to the, to the sheds. So we're going to do it up even better than, than what we've done in the past. And I, I think, I think for the long haul, it'll probably be good. It isn't a, it is a expense that we weren't planning on, but we do have money in our reserves. So we'll be fine and we will deal with it. It'll probably cost us about 30,000 to take care of. One of the things that came up, Jake, Jake Denbrock's crew is really good with cabins and they talked to us about our cabins and things we can do to help preserve them. And I think a couple of their guys are going to come help us with some volunteers. And we need to get our hands on about 20, 20 to 25 gallons of linseed oil. And they will show us how to get that sprayed into the wood and paint and brushed in and help preserve those cabins for a longer time. So that was probably the silver lining that came out of this. We've also had challenges with personnel like everybody else has. We probably will have three different docents working this summer to make our, make it through the summer. And then we will fill in with volunteers either while the docent's there or if we don't have a docent. Maria Dixon is our- Maria Dixon is our main, I guess, docent and volunteer coordinator, and she's done an awesome job with things. And I just wanted to mention, you have in front of you the letter from us to Stephanie Queen and there's also the, our budget in there. But then I laid down in front of you this cute little back sheet that you should have there. And I think actually Sarah Handel put this together, but it was off of the statistics that that Maria Dixon came up with. And it's kind of some cool stuff there. And I'm sure it changes every year. It'd be interesting to see other years if, where people come from, if that changes, but it's kind of cool. We also need to do a strategic plan. Haven't done one in a while. We applied for a grant last year, didn't get it. It's through the museum. Alaska Museum Association, they give out grants for smaller museums to do strategic planning. We applied again this year. We're hoping that we'll, we'll get it this year and can do a strategic plan because we're long overdue for one. We're, we're still doing our ask like we've done every year, five thousand from the city of Soldatna and then whatever's allocated our percentage from the Major Chansky Fund, which is usually in the seven thousand to nine thousand range. Yeah, if the city's feeling generous and wants to give us any extra, we won't say no, but we're okay with our normal, normal ask. And that's all I've got. Be happy to answer questions.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Hutchings.
So, Mr. Bagley, how much is the strategic plan through the?
I think we can do it for probably five to seven thousand. The grant we're asking for is five thousand.
Well, I do appreciate what you do out there for all of us old timers. Thank you.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you. As Councilmember Hutchings mentioned earlier, there is the local organization, a hundred plus women who care. And the Historical Society could come in. We meet quarterly and every person who's a member agrees to donate a hundred dollars to the organization that is selected. And we've, since we organized a few years ago, we've donated a lot of money to nonprofit organizations here in town. So I would encourage you guys to come in and make presentation. My question comes back to, I understand there's going to be cruise ships coming into Homer. Are you guys talking with folks in Homer about making sure folks come by and visit the museum?
Yeah, I, we've never really seen cruise ship passengers come in there. There are some buses, tours and anchorage that come down to the peninsula. We haven't seen any since COVID, I don't believe, but I imagine that'll be starting back up again. But they're usually not off, they're not from the cruise ships. They don't usually let them out of, they keep control of them. So they don't let them get out of their hands too easily.
I'm, I'm sure Ralph would be willing to talk to you.
Excellent.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Hutchings.
Just another thing, Keenai Peninsula Foundation does a grant run in the spring, but they are also doing one in the fall this year. So you might take a look at that. I know it's usually only three to four thousand dollars, but it's something that would go towards that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I've enjoyed going through the museum a couple of times with people that had come up from outside. And they've all enjoyed it and have a lot of pictures taken.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. That finishes the part of the agenda with the non-departamental requests. So we will now move on to the next part and that's the utility fund. And before all of you leave, I thank you very much again for being here and the budget will come in front of the council at this meeting by the, before the end of May.
Five, five minutes, but so yes, the budget will come before the council at our May twenty fourth meeting for final. Is that correct, Melanie and Stephanie, for the folks who were here?
Yes.
So it will be introduced next week or May ten?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. So yes, the intention is to introduce the budget ordinance at the meeting on the tenth and the council can then set the public hearing for May twenty.
All right. So we will be making decisions at the May twenty fourth meeting on what organizations to fund and at what levels.
And you dropped your pen. Okay, here we go on the utility fund.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Glad to be back for our second day of budget presentations. And before we continue to the next item on the agenda, Melanie and I wanted to invite any additional discussion. If there is an interest among the council that would give us direction on the non-departamental funding, we're happy to leave the, the budget exactly as we presented it initially, that draft, but if the council had wanted to provide additional feedback at this point, then we would actually be able to incorporate those changes into the ordinance when it comes forward. We're happy to allow that discussion or wait until.
And I agree with that. So if we want to make any changes right now, we can make those changes. So.
We could make recommendations and what we want to see change so that staff could then make adjustments, but we wouldn't necessarily be making formal motion.
Yep.
Based on the presentations that we got today and the lack that we had, one organization that opted to not show up. I would look at redistributing those funds to to Salteshi Boys and Girls Club and the Historical Society. And, and bumping Salteshi up to twenty, I'd even maybe make it twenty-two, five and another twenty-five hundred to the Historical Society and then the remainder to Boys and Girls Club.
Was the amount you're proposing for Salteshi?
Basically increasing it seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred, upping it seventy-five hundred more.
Okay.
So it'll be twenty-two, five. And then seventy-five hundred for the Historical Society and whatever's left as folks crunch numbers over there to the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, we had we had a letter, it would have been nice to have the senior center come and make the pitch as to why they would like the money, but not hearing anything either to the administration or coming to this meeting. It must not be important.
Any other comments? I'm, I'm a bit disappointed that they did not show up. Unfortunate.
I would say I, I would like to see Salteshi funded to their twenty thousand dollar ask. I like the idea of redistributing. Actually, I'd say I'm kind of on the fence about redistributing the funds. I, I really don't like that they didn't show up. I think it's really important that if you're going to ask for funding at this level from the city, you should be here in person to make that request. On the other hand, although I feel like they should be here to make that request and get that funding, I also don't want to punish the elderly because of the administration's lack of effort to come and make their request on their behalf. So I'm kind of torn between just leaving it flat for the seniors and just giving Salteshi their extra five thousand or redistributing it as Vice Mayor Parker. Instead, I could really go either way on that.
Any other comments? Ms. Hutchings.
Well, I agree with the distribution that that council person, Vice Mayor Lisa Parker made. I do know that the executive director is out of state. She's been on vacation for a couple of months with, or a month with the seniors. They have lost their president of their board and their vice president of their board. And they have lost their state funding because of not providing the proper grants documents, even though they were asked to redo it. I did pass out the paperwork that has come from the state. So I did talk to the exec, the president of the board who resigned two weeks ago and she said it was in total disarray. And she didn't know where they were going, but that she was done. So.
As mentioned, I'm a bit disappointed that no one showed up or at least and then no one took the effort to call and explain why no one was going to be here. I hate to see funding go away from them, but they also have income coming through the, their pull tab operation. Which I've, I believe in years past has been fairly substantial. So I'm though, though I'm hesitant in doing away with it, I, I can support what Vice Mayor Parker had said and redistribute those funds until such time as we hear something else. Do you have any, anything else to say on that? And you've got the information you need?
Thank you for the additional discussion. We'll consider that as we prepare the ordinance. And we're happy to move on to utilities.
Just, just as a follow-up, you know, I mean, I am a senior citizen. So I qualify in, in that group and it's not that I don't support seniors being, being one, but I also need to make sure if we're providing funds to an organization, that the organization is being responsible and, and utilizing those funds appropriately. Maybe when Soldatna, senior center, senior center gets their act in order, they can come back to the council and, and make a request, but to provide funding to an organization that's in complete disarray is irresponsible on our part.
Nothing else, let's move on.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Whitney. So we skipped over the portion of the summary letter at the beginning of your budget document yesterday that deals with the utility. So I'll start there if I can reference you on Roman numeral page five. Or if you prefer, page sixty-five is the start of the utility fund in our budget book. So maybe that's a good place for you to anchor yourself as we cover the higher level. Big takeaways, I'll talk through those and I'm going to pass the mic to Melanie and she'll take us through the document. Mike Allen, our utility manager is here. And he can speak to operational specifics and specific requests and his budget requests this year. But in general, the utility fund, as you know, serves customers with water or sewer or both, approximately fifteen hundred residences and businesses in the city. It's separate from the general fund and is supported by user fees through our rate paying structure. Revenues for FY twenty-four are projected to be two million, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is an increase of just over a quarter of a million dollars or almost ten percent, nine point nine three percent from the current fiscal year. And then we expect those revenues to go up from between FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five and additional just under five percent. The utility fund expenditure budget is up about just over twenty percent. So this is one of the areas where materials and supplies, contracted services, et cetera, equipment. The rising cost of those things have really had a pretty direct impact on the expenses in the utility fund. For FY twenty-four, we're projecting an expenditure budget of two point seven million. It's about four hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase. Or as I mentioned, that twenty point four nine percent. That's due to salaries and benefits, but mostly just maintenance and operations. In June of twenty eighteen, just as a reminder, we entered into a loan agreement with the DEC and those were for our, our big capital projects, the wastewater treatment plant improvements. That project was completed in FY twenty with a final cost of approximately two and a half million. That loan is for a ten-year period with an interest rate of one and a half percent and debt service in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, ninety-five dollars per year is included in this budget for FY twenty-four and twenty-five. We will have a new loan for the, through the Alaska DEC for the de-watering project. The council had authorized us to pursue those funds. And that debt service is not yet included in this budget. So there will be additional debt service when we secure those funds. And that's for the replacement of our, our belt press with the, the new centrifuge that we're currently going out to procure. The, this budget includes a utility rate increase of five percent for water and six percent for sewer. Those were the annual increases authorized by the council with adoption or enactment of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh oh one. And it's the first of five-year increases that are scheduled for the water and sewer rates as approved by that ordinance and based on the analysis done by the, the rate study that HDR had performed. So those are really the high-level takeaways. I'm going to now kick it back to Melanie and we'll start on page sixty-five of the budget book.
Before we get there, just a quick question. What's the status on the permit?
The, Whistle Hill?
Discharge permit.
Discharge permit. Kyle or Mike want to give an update on that? Don't all fight part at once.
Currently it's under review at the state level. They are circling back with what they came up with and wanting to go back and redo or relook at the laws, legislation for opera. So we're still in a holding pattern, basically.
So we're still working on the what, ten years now?
It's at the state level currently.
We completed our sampling, so the DEC and EPA have the real world data of our effluent and of the river, something we accomplished, I think, or Mike got here at the city. And so they've been number crunching and working on an approval system for site-specific criteria to establish proper limits specific to permittees. And so once that framework is involved, then they'll establish the, the site-specific criteria for the city of Soldatna's discharge permit. So to answer your question, the DEC and EPA are continuing to work together on the solution.
Do we still have costs involved in testing?
No, we're, we're through testing. Right now there's an occasional cost from the consultant that assists with questions that come up in DEC. I think one about two or three weeks ago, DEC had a question regarding a sampling figure and its location and they answered in an email. So there's some small consultant costs that are ongoing, otherwise no, no expenditures.
So with the rate this is going, you'll be getting to retirement age by the time it's finished?
The bridge over the Keenai Sterling.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Parker.
Yeah, follow-up. So when ADEC finally gets around to reissuing the permit, will the effective date on the reissuance be as of today or are they going to go back to when it expired? Because then it'll already have expired again.
So the new permit will be a five-year permit from whenever date it's issued. So some date in the future, it'll be a new five-year permit. And while it's maybe not comfortable to be in this in-between, it's not a bad position for the city to be in. So we're still in compliance and complete cooperation with both of those agencies. While they look at this unique new challenge and whether to kind of solve it for Soldatna or potentially more broadly for other municipalities in the state that'll be in the same boat. So.
And, and with ADEC, once the permit is issued, a year later, we start the application process for the next permit because of the timeframe involved, which keeps us hooked into the parameters of the current permit.
Yes, the permit hasn't been administratively extended.
Again and again and again. Okay.
Okay.
We'll move, we'll move to numbers now.
Thanks for the question. Okay, take it away, Melanie.
Okay, so utility fund, as Stephanie mentioned, this budget includes water and sewer rate increases as approved in ordinance a couple of months ago. As far as revenues go, the, the main increases here are related to water, sewer, and then some interest earnings based on what we talked about yesterday that came from our investment advisors. So looking at revenues, less expenditures, which we'll talk about in a minute, it leads to change in fund balance of about two hundred and ten thousand dollars for FY twenty-four.
And Melanie, I'll just follow up. So we have our fund balance invested with Alaska Permanent Capital Management. That includes the portion of that fund balance that belongs to the utility fund. So every year when we budget for interest, we get those, the estimated return back from our advisors. So every year when we budget for interest, we get those, the estimated return back from our advisors. Um, you will see interest earnings in the general fund as well as the other funds, such as the utility fund that, for their portion of those earnings that, that is invested.
If you want to turn the page to, starting at sixty-eight, sixty-nine. In the water department, uh, we've increased travel and training slightly, um, increased, uh, for a greater emphasis on professional development and because we're going to be offering, uh, operator CDL training for this, this upcoming year. And we've split the travel and training across all three departments. Previously, it hadn't been budgeted, I believe, on sewer, only in water and wastewater and, and we're proposing to spread it across all three departments. Um, the next increase is in materials and supplies and that's really the biggest of the increases. Um, you might remember a couple of meetings ago, maybe it was even last meeting, the, the resolution we brought before you, uh, that was about, it was ratifying the previous purchases for some chemicals that had gone up substantially. You'll see that in this budget. Um, the Aqua Mag is one and Lime, which is in a different department is another. But for example, Aqua Mag here, last year's budget, uh, was twenty-five thousand. Now for the same amount of Aqua Mag, it's fifty-seven thousand. So it's gone up substantially. The other area that's gone up quite a bit is the CL two analyzer chemicals and the hydrants. The hydrants, for example, six thousand dollars for parts to repair hydrants, now the same amount of parts, seventeen thousand dollars. So we're seeing big increases in materials and supplies throughout the utility department. In addition to that, we're also seeing, um, it's, it's kind of cyclical depending on, um, what needs to be repaired or maintained. So some years it's higher, some years it's lower, just depending on the parts and, and pieces that need to be replaced. So also included in the materials budget is this Hawk, um, chlorine analyzer replacement for well B and spare PLCs for Skyline and FY twenty-four and Karen Street and FY twenty-five. Those are non-recurring charges that are in this budget but won't be in future budgets. Also included in, um, uh, under small tools and minor equipment, we've added a couple of items there that are non-recurring charges. One of them is a hydrant flushing diffuser and hose for twenty-five hundred dollars and then some tool outfitting for the vehicles. And that's spread across the water department, sewer department and wastewater treatment plant department. Um, one of the other items is support and maintenance contract, uh, that's gone up for Badger meter reading software. It's something that we've currently, we're currently using. It's just something that we implemented a few years ago and inadvertently left out of the budget, so added it into this budget. Believe that's the biggest changes in this department. Uh, the other, the other changes we noted before relates to administrative service charges, that's new. And that would be in water, sewer and wastewater treatment plants.
Any questions, Mr. Carey?
Just wondering, when I hear again those, uh, huge increases more than doubling in terms of costs, are those sole source items that we, again, there's only one vendor from whom we get these and basically they double the cost we have to pay, or is it, they were from out of the country and now we're getting them, I mean, that just seems exorbitant.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carey. Um, there had been one provider that we'd worked with more than others when the costs were low. Uh, when we saw these large increases, I think the utility went out and, and there are alternatives. So we will now, now that they are above this twenty thousand and because it's prudent to do so, we will competitively solicit quotes moving forward. There are more than one vendors who can deliver these products.
Thank you.
Mr. Chelsin.
Uh, thank you. Yesterday during the work session, um, when you were presenting about the model, uh, that we'd be pivoting away, um, from holding all the administrative charges, uh, centrally and then distributing those out proportionally to the different departments. Um, I, I, I recall that, I want to say there's like a two hundred thousand dollar charge that we're looking at doing for the utility, but I see seventy-two thousand listed here. Am I, am I misremembering the two hundred thousand plus number for the utility fund?
I think you, Councilmember Chelsin, that's the, it's because our utility fund is broken into three divisions.
Okay.
Wastewater treatment plant. So that'll be spread evenly among those three divisions. So you'll see that number in all three of those places, which adds up to that two hundred thousand dollar plus number we quoted previously.
Okay. And then looking at the utility fund as a whole, um, and the substantial increase in expenditures for next year, I see that we're again looking at about that twenty percent number increased expenditures. Um, just to confirm that twenty percent increase already includes the administrative, uh, assignment to, to those funds? Or is this before we actually start charging them for those administrative services and then it's going to be higher?
No, it does include the administrative charge.
Okay.
And, and one thing I'll note too, um, is up under salaries and benefits. You'll notice that the, the change in salary and benefits in the totals are not that great for this year and they're actually going down in next year. Um, and the reason for that, that's different than what we're seeing in other funds. And the reason for that is because of a reallocation, like we talked about yesterday, of some, some particular personnel. Like for example, Kyle used to be, um, partially in the, um, in the public works department, a small amount in water, sewer, wastewater treatment plant and the airport. We've now taken the water, sewer, wastewater treatment plant away now that we have a, you know, a, a utility manager and we've reallocated that to public works and airport. So because that has gone down, uh, the, the change for salaries and benefits has gone, it's not as big as in other departments.
Okay. And then, um, even though we're going to see a twenty percent potential increase in expenditures, we're looking at a five percent increase in rates and that's, I think that was predetermined, but we also have the rate study coming up. Do you know the status on that right now and when we could potentially see increased rates as recommended by that?
So the rate study, uh, is complete and the, um, council adopted the ordinance, which then set those rates for the next five years. So there's no additional analysis we're doing right now into rates. Um, those are, those are, uh, according to our perspective fixed unless the council wanted to reopen that conversation moving forward. Um, we wouldn't anticipate needing to revisit the rates based on the implementation of the administrative fee. Um, we're comfortable that that additional, um, expense can be supported by the current rate plan, um, over the next five years. And, uh, to your earlier point, I think it is, it is a large increase between FY twenty-three, the current year we're in, and FY twenty-four. Um, if you look at page sixty-six, you can see administrative services charge. That shows up as line number four, six, oh, oh, oh. So it's about the fourth from the bottom. And for the utility as a whole, implementing the administrative services charges of two hundred and seventeen thousand, it's roughly half of the increase in the total operations of the department. So it's good, we're going to see that significant increase between FY twenty-three and twenty-four. But then looking ahead to FY twenty-five, that's not a growing cost, uh, that we'll see again and again.
Got it.
Kind of a big adjustment this first year when we implement this concept, but not something that's going to continue to escalate over time.
Perfect. And then my last question is, um, looking at the materials, uh, costs and just like Aqua Mag, for example, that's one material that's just skyrocketed. Um, I know that we have looked at our, um, roadmap for capital projects, uh, specific to, uh, water. And I believe one of the things was a centralized, um, pumping facility with active filtration, uh, similar to what Kenai has. I think maybe you may be able to speak a little bit to this better with the sand filtration. If we moved to that type of system, are we going to be able to save costs on Aqua Mag? Cause we're no longer having to pull sediment out of the water by injecting this, letting it sit in the mains?
There would be some perceived cost savings, but with the new treatment, there would be additional cost in different chemicals that you would utilize.
Got it. So it's not a one and done spend on that facility.
Right.
Got it. Yeah. So the rate increase will be July first for the next five years.
Correct.
Yeah. Unless something changes and, uh, that'd be pretty drastic, I would. Okay. Moving on. Any other questions from the council?
Okay, so moving on to sewer. Page seventy-two, seventy-three. Again, the increase in travel and training, we used to not budget for travel and training in the sewer department and, uh, we've added that split three ways. So there is some additional funds in sewer department for travel and training. Small tools and minor equipment, uh, again, the tool outfitting for the vehicles that's spread across all three departments, that's included in there as well as some traffic signage for when our guys are out working in the roads to have some signage with arrows pointing traffic around. Hitch mounted traffic signage for five thousand dollars.
Just that, that's, you know, we've been, um, purchasing some equipment over the last few years, uh, related to safety. If you recall, we had the, um, kind of the earphones with microphones so that the crew could have ear protection while also be in communication. This is another similar, um, purchase to that where, as you know, as you're driving down Cobuck or Binkley, there might be times where our crew is right in the middle of traffic and we don't stop two-way traffic. People kind of curve around and this is, um, another piece of equipment that'll help protect our employees when they're working amidst, vehicle traffic.
Um, contracted services, uh, lift station repairs for the Tides and K Beach Lift Station, that's a big increase, thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, non-recurring charge. Is the biggest one, I think, in contracted services. Um, other changes are small and reflect anticipated costs. And then again, just the administrative charges, service charges that we previously talked about, those are the big changes in this department.
Any questions from the council? Saying no, we'll move on.
Wastewater treatment plant, page seventy-six and seventy-seven. This is another area where we're going to see big increases in materials and supplies. One good example is the lime going from eleven thousand dollars in the prior year budget to forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars in the current year budget for the same amount. Big increases. Um, no.
One more thing I can add just that we're talking about now. So, uh, we used to be restricted based on physical space and how much quantity we could buy. At one point, we now have an opportunity, if prices are good, to buy in bulk because we have the vacated, um, animal control building, which is now actively being used by our utility department for hydrant maintenance, but we can also use it for storage. So we'll be, you know, knowing that these are annual recurring costs, we can be mindful of if prices are looking better at certain times, doing larger acquisitions, even if that required us to come back to the council, um, because we know that these are chemicals we'll need every single year.
All right. Um, also under materials and supplies, uh, the DI water filters, that's going to be an ongoing expense, but it's new to this budget and it's because of some new equipment, I believe, that was recently purchased. Uh, fair PLCs for the RASWAS and control buildings, that's a non-recurring charge in FY twenty-four. And sensors for air monitoring system, that's another one, um, that's, actually that one went down. Well, that one went down. Can you answer that? Okay. Okay, small tools and minor equipment, um, couple of non-recurring charges there. The tool outfitting that we previously talked about as well as influent and effluent sampler replacement, that's ten thousand dollars in FY twenty-four. What we currently have, I believe, is aging and needs to be replaced. Under rental, we're, we're to eight hundred rental, uh, equipment rental for aeration basin cleaning. That's a multi-year project, something that's been needing to be done, but we're going to tackle it now, so. And then under contracted services, the big one there is just pump rebuilding. Has gone up in, in cost and that's an ongoing every year expense. I think that's pretty much for it for the wastewater treatment plant.
I should have brought this up, Melanie, during the sewer discussion, but, um, I think I mentioned it yesterday. The Whistle Hill project is not included in this budget yet. Um, can you give the council a sense of what that'll look like in terms of operating budget impact after that project? Where will that live in the budget after that project is, um, completed and the full cost is known and then they'll start making payments on that.
Sure. So that's still kind of to be determined. Currently we have, um, a fund that we'll talk about in a few minutes. It's called the street assessments fund and that is the fund that collects the assessments for street projects. We also have a fund that hasn't been used for, uh, I think it was the last time we did water and sewer improvements that we collected assessments on. I was just coming to work here, so about twenty-two years ago. Um, so we can resurrect that fund and I anticipate using it in the same way that we use the street assessment fund where we would spend the money out of the capital project fund and then we would bill the, the customers, the property owners and collect those money into this, this water and sewer assessment fund, similar to the street assessment fund. And the way that the street assessment fund is currently set up is that all the revenues that are collected in that fund have to be spent on future water or future street projects. So I would assume that the same would be true for, um, a water and sewer assessment fund.
So that'll show up as a transfer out into that capital project fund when the money's appropriated.
Or that already did, we already did that, yes.
Then we'll start seeing that, the revenue collection over time, depending on that feedback.
Yes. And that will all be, all come before council after we have final project costs. They'll set, they'll set the rates, um, the payback period and all of those, um, terms. And, and then we'll, we'll figure out the accounting piece of it. But yeah, I anticipate that being another operating fund in here, similar to the street assessment fund, but it's still kind of to be determined.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Carey?
And I probably wasn't listening well enough, but you didn't say it was a fund that, again, because we haven't used it, it's been sitting there for twenty-two years, did you? You did.
The last time we billed property owners for water and sewer improvements, we were just paying them off when I came to work here. So, you know, the, the projects had been done sometime prior to that and they were just concluding about the time I came to work here.
But Melanie, there's no money in that.
There's no money in that fund. We still have that fund. I will resurrect that fund. There's no money.
Cause I wonder how many other councilors are like.
No, no, no.
She found them all when she came back to work for us and what year was that? You found them all at that time.
That was going to be mine.
No, no.
Sorry.
Anything else?
Sorry for the confusion.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. So for Kyle, the utility guys, um, with our water, sewer, wastewater treatment plant, any major issues that you see, things that we need to plan for?
Currently in the CIP list, what we're doing now is the bio solids de-watering, which is the belt press rehab or replacement with the centrifuges. Um, and then after that, the headworks, uh, we need to do some, uh, uh, cleaning up, new screening needs to be done in the headworks and possibly screw pump. Um, and then the water as, um, Councilmember Chelsin mentioned the water treatment, uh, over at Wellsea, new, new treatment option over there. Those are kind of the big ones.
Yeah, and we were, um, if you recall, we were successful in last year's congressionally directed spending requests. We did get those three projects funded and, um, we received information recently within the last two weeks now on how to actually go through the process of applying for that funding. So we'll be receiving funding for the, um, a portion of the cost of the, uh, bio solids de-watering project as well as the headworks building and, uh, I thought there was some UV, oh, yeah, water treatment, okay. So, uh, those are all, as, as Mike said, outlined in the five-year CIP. So we're going to be actively working through those priorities over the next five years and updating it annually.
Any other questions? I do have two. Um, as the, has it gone out to bid yet for Whistle Hill? Um, and any idea on when that's going to happen then?
It has not gone out for bid. We're still waiting on DOT approval. Once, once we get DOT approval then, and address any of their comments, then we can put it out on the street for bid.
Have they given us any kind of a timeframe?
DOT?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. We, we've had, we've, we've had some meetings with them, but other than that.
If, if they move anything like the trail, it'd be another two years. But, um, the other thing is, we've noticed kind of the electricity, it's, it's gone up. Um, and I, I kind of thought, uh, when we put in the new blowers, part of that was that, uh, the, the hope or the projection was, is that electric bill would go down because blowers would be more efficient.
Well, the, the blowers are more efficient, but the sa- the savings, um, are not great enough to mitigate the rising costs of utilities in general.
So we're, we're expecting a twenty-two, we're talking, we're expecting a twenty-two thousand dollar increase in electric, uh, usage.
Not necessarily. It, we are expecting a twenty-two thousand dollar increase from the prior year budget. Keep in mind, when we put the FY twenty-three budget together, it was partway through FY twenty-one. We were kind of trying to project what we thought, uh, rates were going to do and it, it's not always exact. And so by the time we get a few years later, some were too high, some were too low and we kind of adjust as we go. There's a number of factors that in, uh, in, influence electricity rates and, uh, we take all those things into account. One of the things that the changes this year from last year is that we're utilizing the animal, the old animal control building where we weren't using that before. They're doing hydrodirt repairs there and other things. And so we're paying some utilities on that where we weren't before. So that's part of the increase. It's not twenty-two thousand dollars worth of the increase, but it is part of the increase.
Well, based on the twenty-two actuals, we're still looking at about a ten, twelve percent increase.
Correct. And we don't yet know what the twenty-three actuals will be. So we haven't updated this document or, or probably haven't updated our calculations of where we think we'll end up in the current fiscal year, or do you have additional information on that?
I, I do. So I did project where I think we're going to be this year compared to last year. What I did was I looked at the first eight months of FY twenty-two compared to the first eight months of FY twenty-three and any increase in that, I, I added in and, and kind of projected, I added that to FY- And any increase in that, I, I added in and, and kind of projected, I added that to FY twenty-two's actual, that increase or decrease. And then I compared it to the last couple of years because I didn't want to lower it too low, but if we were overshooting, I wanted to adjust for that. But, um, I did take into account where we're at this year compared to where we were at the last year. And then I factored in an additional, um, increase for going forward.
Maybe in the future, we might want to take a look at a line that says FY twenty-three's, for example, actuals to date. So that we have something to kind of compare.
Okay, we, uh, yeah, we did that before we switched to a biennial budget process, we did that. So, um, prior to the budget, two years ago, you would have seen a budget document that said FY twenty-three budget, FY twenty-three projected, and then the current year we're in. What we, and this is, uh, probably not something we can switch in this budget document, um, on this timeline, we need to adopt the budget, but moving forward, we're open to that. Melanie and I essentially made a decision, um, that we got away from that. Instead, what we added is an extra year of actuals. So in your budget document, you used to have one year of actuals, one year of projected, and then the budget. Now we're showing you two columns of actuals, one year of the budget. And we can, we can get away from that particularly, you know, next budget go around when you have time to update those. Um, ultimately, it was kind of a conversation initially about how many columns can we fit on a page without making the text too small. Um, but we did like the idea of adding that second year of actual data. Um, if we can fit two years of actual and one year of projected, that would give you the best information possible.
Um, like I said, I'm, I'm used to looking at actuals at, um, a certain point in time, so, okay, moving right along.
Okay, so I think that wraps up the utility fund, if there's no additional questions.
We do, and, um, Mike, if you're able to stay, we'll get a couple other departments, uh, funds out of the way and then we'll talk about equipment replacement.
Okay, so moving on to the airport funds, starting on page eighty, revenues are listed. There's a note at the bottom of that page and, and that note is essentially saying that, um, the way that we budgeted in FY twenty-four for long-term leases is the way that we've always budgeted for long-term leases. There was a change, you may remember the, the auditor, when she was here, talking about this Gatsby eighty-seven, this new governmental accounting standards board, standard that was implemented, that we had to, we have to now report lease revenues differently than we did before. That's only for financial statement purposes and to keep things more consistent to how they've been and what we know to be true for money coming in related to leases. We chose, at least for this year, uh, to budget long-term land leases the way that we always have. So when you look at the long-term land lease revenues FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two, you'll see a big increase in FY twenty-two actual. And then it's coming back down, and the reason is because of that accounting adjustment at the end of the year that's required now for financial statement purposes. Other change, um, in revenue, so we did, for our long-term land leases, we did budget a two and a half percent increase over the prior year. So for over FY twenty-three, because that's what's built into the land, into the lease documents. We also increased rent, and that's, as you may recall, yesterday, we talked about the general fund paying the airport fund for non-aviation, uh, use of, of the airport, where Rotary Park and the shop sit. That also increases two and a half percent, so there's an increase there and then also with, um, interest.
Yeah, just, I mean, some additional anecdotal comments. We applied the administrative services fees to the airport. That's had a significant impact in terms of that budget being balanced. Um, internally, uh, we're aware of one opportunity, which is, uh, we had approved funding, I believe, through the current year capital budget. Or maybe it was the current year operating budget to do kind of a strategic assessment to look at the marketing of our airport, as well as economic development opportunities on a portion of airport land that is, um, outside the fence. It's on the north side of Funny River Road, kind of that stretch, beginning with where the, um, Keen Eye River Center is. And there's, uh, that land is treated somewhat differently and it's original patent to the city. And there's opportunity, like we did with the River Center, to actually, um, consider development, not just development, potential disposal of some of that land. So, one of the things, our current, um, airport improvement plan, uh, looks largely at technical needs and infrastructure needs of the airport. It doesn't delve into kind of the market analysis or, or, uh, economic development ideas. But that's a separate effort that our airport manager Kyle's going to undertake. And the other thing we talked about is just looking at rates. Um, I don't know when the last time we looked at tie-down rates. Um, Kyle, has it been quite a long time since we did that analysis? Um, I think it, it warrants, uh, revisiting that to see if, if the rate structure is, um, where it should be in terms of, you know, we want to be competitive with, um, other airports, we want to keep costs low for folks. Um, we haven't looked at those in a while. We did this last year really drill down on snow removal. So, after last year, we had a big snow year. We had conversations with council about sharing those resources between streets and parking lots and the airport. This year, uh, Scotty's crew did really close tracking of actual time spent. And we ended up, I think, deciding that our current way of, uh, how we fund, how we share those felt appropriate, given the amount of time and resources that were at the airport. So on that, on that end, we're good. Um, but this idea of, um, kind of revisiting rates every few years, even if we don't end up changing them, is, is probably something we want to continue to think about.
And I don't remember the last time we looked at rates, but the last time we actually increased rates at the airport was July of twenty seventeen. Several years.
Done with the airport?
Um, let me go through expenditures on the airport.
Any questions about the airport?
We could look at expenditures if you want, there's not a lot of changes, um, for expenditures, except for the administrative service charges that we talked about. Um, we did increase the travel and training slightly, uh, because typically our airport manager goes to out-of-state training every two to three years. So every two to three years, you'll see that budget go up slightly. Um, we just had some inflationary increases in materials and also passed on to contractors those inflationary increases and an increase in repairs to our airport fleet as it, as it gets older. We did, under contracted services, decrease the frequency of grass mowing that was in the previous budget and eliminated some marketing promotional consulting services because that's going to be taken care of in the current year. Other than that, not a lot of changes in the airport.
Yeah, any questions about the airports? Okay, read assessment fund?
Street Assessment Fund, this is what we were tr- previously talking about. This is the fund that collects the assessments for street projects. And the only assessment we're still currently collecting on is the, the street project, uh, King Fisher Court Sterling Street. And we have about eight accounts left to be paid off. If everyone pays on time, they should be paid off in, in twenty twenty-five. So, the funds that have, um, added up in this fund will be, you, they're restricted for use on future street improvement projects.
So, if I'm part of this street assessment district and I failed to pay, what happens?
We have the option of foreclosing on property. We have not had to do that yet.
The assessment itself is a lien on the property that's recorded at the time the district is formed. So, um, that's the mechanism by which if there was a failure, of course, we would propose to work with folks if that, um, if someone was in a tight spot. But, um, typically, we see the assessments paid off much sooner than the ten-year payback period. Um, largely in part because, uh, if a parcel sells, they'll wrap that into the closing, paying off the remaining assessment entirely. So, we see a lot of them get paid off that way. Sometimes people voluntarily come forward and want to prepay it down, just to avoid the interest, but, um, I've not been in the situation where we've had to.
We've never had to forefoot, well, not since I've been here, we haven't had to foreclose. We have had a couple of circumstances where people have gotten substantially behind and we've had to set up payment agreements with them, but that's generally worked out and we've gotten people caught up, so.
How much longer do we have on that, though, the one?
It should be paid off if everybody pays timely, it should be paid off in twenty twenty-five.
And then we would have a new one for the Whistle Hill one or something, no? Sure.
Yes, yes, and currently the fund balance in the Street Assessment Fund is about three hundred and fifty thousand. So this is restricted for use on future street improvement projects. So, I anticipate one of the next street improvement projects that comes forward, we could transfer, you know, some general fund money, but we could also transfer this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out. I would, I would probably propose using this first and then the remainder coming from the general fund. Moving on to the equipment replacement fund. Equipment replacement fund is an internal service fund. Um, depreciation is really the only expense in this fund. Um, but this fund, this budget does authorize the purchase of several pieces of equipment. So, if, I think everybody that has equipment on here is here and can speak to.
Apologize not to belabor the point, just so that, um, that means that this budget, the box on page eighty-eight, uh, this budget authorizes the purchase of these items. If there's no changes, um, you would expect to see in future years then an additional expense in each of those departments that are the, the payment back. So, it shows up as an expense in the following year after the year in which it was purchased.
So the, the equipment is purchased out of this fund and then it is spread over its useful life and paid back by the fund, by the department that purchased it, that is using the equipment.
And not to overcomplicate things, but we don't charge interest, but we have had a conversation about whether, um, just at some point, that'll be sustainable and we might need to replenish the fund because we're purchasing it at today's cost, but they're paying it back, um, over time, useful life of the equipment and the cost of replacing it in twenty or thirty years is higher than what's being paid back. So.
This fund does earn interest for its piece of our investments. So some money is, is earned from that, as well as when we sell pieces of equipment, the sales, you know, the revenue we earn from those sales goes back into this fund.
Yeah, and so that was just a minor footnote comment, but in general, I think we're in really pretty good shape. We've been successful in, uh, keeping up with our fleet, certainly in terms of, uh, the police department, but some of the big equipment, you know, it's, it's painful to spend two hundred thousand plus on one, uh, item, but we're in pretty good shape. And I think moving forward, um, generally stand on track things. So, Melanie can talk you through the different items included that are proposed.
Sure, sure. Um, the first one is authorizing the purchase of a replacement patrol vehicle for the police department, it's about seventy-two thousand dollars. We've been pretty good at replacing a patrol car or two each year. I think we're in, we're, I think we've cycled out all of the old, old Crown Vicks and, um, starting to cycle out some of the old expeditions. So, uh, we're, we're doing pretty good with maintaining our fleet now. Um, if there's any questions on that, Scotty's here, he can talk about that. Uh, the next item is authorizing replacements, snow blower head for the trackless of about thirty-one thousand dollars. Two used replacement street sweepers, seventy thousand dollars each.
Let's pause and let Scotty talk about street sweepers for a minute, and I think this is a really smart approach. Scotty, can you talk to that?
So, currently you'll see our little Pelican sweepers out. They're coming in at a new cost of like three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So these are very vital pieces to my fleet, but we use them for like a month, month and a half a year. So I reached out and did a bunch of research and there's a company that actually maintains the whole Chicago fleet of sweepers. And he brings sweepers in, rebuilds them and then turns around and resells them. That's where these two would come through, they'd be fifteen years or newer shipped to Alaska at that place. And our current sweepers we're using, uh, one of them is at eighty-six and one of them's in eighty-seven, so they have timed out. So, this was just, you know, spending three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year for two sweepers, you know, times two. Didn't really pan out for the months we used them, so this is kind of a creative way to update our fleet and, you know, save the city some money.
What would we do with the?
We'd have the option of. So we can identify them as surplus and sell them if there's value. Uh, we can also donate them if there's value in doing that. But we've sold heavy equipment recently and, and that, that funding goes back in to replenish this fund.
I'm just thinking, if you've got this place in Chicago that rebuilds them, is there a trade-in value?
Not for that age, no.
That one looks about as old as me.
He was shocked that we still had him running, so he was pretty impressed our mechanics.
So kudos to our shop and our operators and our maintenance department for stretching as much useful life as possible out of our equipment and for Scotty's resourcefulness in, uh, seeking out solutions. It's a pretty awesome find, knowing that we'll be able to get these refurbished, uh, no, not older than fifteen-year-old equipment. And then Melanie's like, great, can we do that for all the other equipment? And if we find out that something like that exists, we'll, we'll actively pursue it, but so far, it's a good solution for the sweepers.
It did, mine relates back to the snow blower that broke this past winter, the new one. Um, was that covered by our insurance in any way, but?
Uh, warranty, they took care of it on warranty, um, so all the parts and pieces were taken care of under warranty. But, so the thing about warranty is, we still got to pay somebody to fix it or we got to fix it. So currently we have the snow blower torn apart in the shop. And so we're doing the labor, replacing the harness and then the fuel pump. So you got two different warranties as well, the fuel pump went out, which would be a cat motor warranty. And then the harness issue would come from the blower company warranty. So we got actually two different warranty items, the parts have been replaced and we're currently, uh, putting them in with our mechanics. That's where we stand, we'll be up and running, but the trackless head would be for the little guy that you see out running around for next year.
So next, uh, spring, I won't be shoveling snow on the song.
I hope you and I both will not be.
You're younger than I am, Dylan.
Any other?
Um, the other item for the, the street department is a replacement plow truck, uh, that was actually budgeted in the prior fiscal year, but they were unable to procure one. So, uh, that funding's going to lapse at the end of the year and we're including it in this coming year's budget. Uh, the next item, um, is, uh, the electric Zamboni that we talked about yesterday, replacing an aging propane Zamboni with an electric one, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And Scotty can give you the, the.
Scotty and maybe also Andrew, if you have comments on.
So, council's asked over the years to maybe come up with a green project, maybe not all members on today, but we thought this would be a great opportunity for the city to go green. And, as you know, the Zamboni's propane indoors, not great, uh, you know, inside of a building as far as, and our ice edge as well. So, we're proposing the electric Zamboni, it's going to come at a cost, um, of, so the base price of the Zamboni for electric is a hundred and thirty-two thousand and the propane model would be ninety-three thousand. Um, but I am going to propose lithium batteries to the electric Zamboni. Everything I researched, talking to people in state, uh, it's a thirteen thousand dollar upgrade, but it gives you true zero emissions compared to the lead acid batteries. And it gives you the running time you need for our busy facility and better life on your batteries and everything that, you know, that we would need for that. So, the, the total cost difference for the electric Zamboni, after all your add-ons, and it would be fifty-two thousand and, uh, fifty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars difference than the propane ZAM that we would, you know, purchase for that. Uh, currently Eagle River has electric Zamboni, which I actually went up there, broke in my old school and, uh, drove it. Just to kind of, I was up there doing a spear skating competition and got talking to the operators anyway. Uh, so they're currently running electric Zamboni with lithium ion batteries. So they highly recommend, uh, Wasilla has electric ZAM with lead acid batteries. And after six years, they are currently replacing the battery pack in their ZAM. So, I think it'd be money ahead for us to do lithium ion batteries. Um, like I said, it's a thirteen thousand dollar cost, they started doing the lithium ion in two thousand seventeen. And as of today, they've literally had three issues with those battery packs and a lot of them related back to wiring issues versus actual battery pack issues in the Zambonis. So, lead acid batteries, you still got to check the, the lead, you got to check your pH balances. So there is some maintenance in them, where the new lithium ion batteries are zero maintenance and they're actually the only true zero emissions batteries, you know, that they, that they make currently, so.
Is the equipment itself, excluding the batteries, um, have a projected, uh, longer life than the, a regular propane one?
I think we'll see less maintenance and equally as length of life beyond the batteries. You know, that would be something we would have to replace eventually would be the ion battery pack. And currently, like I said, they started using them in two thousand seventeen, so they really don't know. Lead acid batteries around five to six years, sometimes seven. Uh, but the lithium ion batteries, they're hoping we can get ten, maybe twelve, thirteen years out of them, as far as that goes.
And the, um, surplus Zamboni, what will happen with those?
So we currently have a nineteen eighty-four for our backup and we have a two thousand three for our main ZAM, which we've put a bunch of money into, so they're running good right now. So I would, meeting with Andrew and Joel, we would use the two thousand three for our backup. And then our nineteen eighty-four would go to auction, you know, maybe City Keen Eye or maybe, you know, somebody as far as that go, we'd go to auction.
So there might be other local agencies that would benefit.
Yeah. And then a question you asked yesterday, propane, all the studies I do, it's about fifty-five hundred dollars a year in propane versus ZAM and the, the electricity cost would be about twelve hundred dollars to keep that ZAM charged throughout the same amount of timeframe. So, it's going to take a while to recover that cost, but I think the true thing. So it's going to take a while to recover that cost, but I think the true thing we're going to see here is zero emissions inside the building. And then along with this cost is, they call it easy three ice edger, so it'd be a electric ice edger as well. Have you ever seen our ice edger? It's actually basically like a lawnmower. You fire it up in your building, usually leaves a blue haze throughout the arena. And you actually run that along your boards. It cuts 18 inches from your boards and we do that weekly. And as part of this would be electric ice edger as well. So if we're going to go one, we should go both and, you know, keep our emissions out of our buildings.
I agree with the order of being not the nicest thing in the world. Any other questions? Moving along.
The other item for Parks and Rec Department, used replacement pickup truck. We've been pretty good about recycling our trucks and so, or any of our vehicles really. As we start replacing them, the Parks and Rec Department generally gets the hand me downs. And since we're able to purchase a lot less lately, they're getting a lot less hand me downs. So one of, I, I know that they're down a truck right now and one of the options that Andrew and Joel had brought forward was purchasing a used truck to replace one of the vehicles or one of the trucks that they currently have. And that would be split between each of the three Parks and Rec departments. So that's included in here, $6,000 for each department. Also a skid steer, snow blower attachment as well as a skid steer, snow blade. Split between a couple of different departments. I think, oh, and a dump. A dump trailer split between a couple of different departments. So the, the, all three of the Parks and Rec departments, depending on the usage of the, the vehicles or equipment, it gets split, you know, divvied out between the different departments. So the last one was the dump trailer and that's something that Andrew and Joel could probably talk about. It's all the benefit of, of purchasing this piece of equipment. About a $33,000 piece.
Especially lately with all the trees and everything. You see everybody and you ogle over the, those black dump trailers that run all over the place. And, but the city has one, it's about 30 years old and pretty small. What we're looking to do is there's a company that builds those that look the same as everything else. Only the bins slide off, just like the, when they drop the dumpsters. Currently, when we go to level the graves with the equipment the city has, it's a loader, a dump truck, a loader operator to run the loader and the operator, and then two staff and plus a bobcat just to level graves because of the, the technology we have. What we're looking to do is buying one of the trailers that's definitely, the base price would be 26, additional 8,000 for a second bin that then we can place during the summertime during July. Because frankly, we could move and haul trash 24 hours a day in the summertime. We still end up with piles on, on certain days. So this would allow us to not only move trash, but also like when we have cleanup days in the park, one of the biggest time users, when we go to haul stuff like that, is that the current trailer, we have to shovel it out. And then also then those people, the staff have to leave the site, go all the way to the dump, get rid of the branches and come back. This would allow us to have continuous action, continuous loading as well as continuous movement of all the trash piles that, that build up on certain days of the week. Or if they just woke up, grabbed the bin, drop another one and move on. So we're trying to, one of those deals like over the years. The city manager, 70, noted yesterday, we've only added point in the last 10 years, only added points eight staff. Or point five, point five eight staff in the last 10 years. And through this, the, the council providing this equipment like this with this efficiency, that's how we've been able to do it. But right now we're all over the place and hoping to get this to help with that.
Sorry, Andrew, I never do this, ask you a question I hadn't asked you before, but it occurred to me after we met. The, included in the budget is a dump trailer, one dump trailer with a second bin that are interchangeable. But you, I didn't think to ask you how you get the bins on and off. And would it be more cost effective just to have two dump trailers? So that we don't have to worry about getting the bins on and off? Is there a cost? Is this a, can you speak to that a little bit or your thought on this approach?
Looking at, we're happy, we're stoked with this model because this for another $8,000, we can essentially have the equivalent of another trailer. It just loads up, it has a, has a cable and a pulley system and a winch that rolls up just like the big dumpsters you see, the waste management stuff used. So that's, that's the benefit of going this route, even though the one trailer is much more expensive. It is the equivalent of two with the base price of 26,000. Two trailers would be 50, obviously 52,000, whereas this one comes in at 32, 36. And then if, if based upon locations, expansion, events, we can drop them for, we could drop it for progress days and do those type of things. And we could even add for, if we find more need, could even add a, a third bin and have that efficiency of continuous running. Nothing worse than getting the crew going and then having them stand and wait, especially when we deal on some of the stuff we do with, whether it's grass, leaves or branches in the trees.
Any questions?
The last department, utility, utility fund in FY25, purchase of a trailered bypass pump for sewer lift stations and a tool cat with snow blower attachment. That's something that Mike probably can talk a little bit more about.
Currently, the city does not have the ability to bypass a lift station. We have some bypass generators, but no ability to pump out of lift station to the next manhole downstream. We were caught, we got very lucky, Christmas time this past year, we were about 30 minutes from running lumpy water down the street with no option other than to start calling a, a hauling company to come and pump out for. So this would provide that ability, be able to bypass a lift station. If we end up without power, with pumps going down, any of that type of issue. The, the bobcat or the tool cat would replace our existing bobcat, provide the ability to blow snow out, be able to push snow rather than, right now we push all of our snow out the front gate over by the animal control and stack it up, being able to be a little bit more efficient with our time and be able to get people out of the seat. The existing bobcat is, I would say it's beyond its life. Let Scotty chime in, he, he would know better than I, but they spend a lot of time making repairs just to place the front bracket for that, so. Any questions?
Yeah, so I'll just add, our, our utility department does a lot of their own snow removal. So with the wastewater treatment plan and then you'll see them at the various lift station locations around town. You're probably familiar with seeing the crew there. So the, the tool cat with a snow blower attachment would replace an existing piece of equipment. We would, as we mentioned with those others, assess whether there's value and whether that can be auctioned or, or it just becomes, sends to an equipment graveyard somewhere. But, but that would be to replace that equipment and and allow them to continue to do their own snow blowing maintenance.
And FY25 is much lighter than FY24. Proposes the replacement of one patrol vehicle and one a trackless at the street department and a backdoor truck at the street department.
And yeah, let's, I'd like, in particular, Scotty, to talk about the trackless. That's the piece of equipment that you'll see clearing sidewalks on the highway, clearing sidewalks on Cobuck. And can you speak to that?
I can, so I can speak inflation on this. So we bought the trackless in 2006. We bought the trackless unit, base unit. We bought a broom attachment and a snow blower for $93,000. Current today's price is just the trackless unit and the snow blower head is going to come in about $210,000. It's what we're talking about with replacing equipment. But it is a very vital part to our community, attaching trails. Not only does it do our sidewalks, our divorced sidewalks, we run the state highways. You know, obviously we created issues this year with getting it up so high you couldn't see around corners. But, you know, we got tired of watching people hobble down the streets and the gutters and that's kind of when the city took over doing sidewalks and keeping things open. And having an additional trackless will also benefit parks. They can come grab the other one or have the other one and start doing more, you know, trails and connector pieces and, you know, be able to continue bike paths and, you know, help us with that goes. It's a, it's quite a unit, you'll see it run around all around Anchorage. I think they're budgeting, they told me they're ordering nine snow blower heads in for their fleet this year. So, yeah, so we'll get the head this year and then hope for an additional trackless next year with snow blower head.
Any questions from the council?
We still have a lot of sidewalk in the city that's only four foot wide. Is this tool that can be used for clearing that as well? Are, are we only going to be able to use this in select areas where we have a full six foot sidewalk?
So during Snowmageddon this year, we actually put the trackless on our sidewalks. The problem with our city is we're not really set up to blow back. Is a lot of it's people's, you know, close to their houses, the fences. We are kind of at a point where we had no place to put it. So we did run down the right of ways, put it where we could this past year. If we had more right of way, you know, say Keen Eye, say different cities are set up. That's why we bring everything to the middle because we do not have a lot of space behind our sidewalks and we don't want to fill people's, you know, yards up. But, you know, we were successful in a few spots I think we'll use in the future to remove that off the sidewalks in areas we wouldn't have to deal with again.
You, you can operate this on a four foot sidewalk and just blow it into the road?
You can, yeah. It was the little bit, you know, we'd slip off now and again, but we actually were able to. Binkley, one of our new beautiful sidewalks, that's a six footer, you know, it shined, you know, it was really nice on there and we actually had a little bit of right of way. So it can do our sidewalks, it's really, you know, it's tight.
Sure, I'd say that was one area where it looked like, you know, we did really good on the snow removal, but I think could have improved a little bit on the four foot sidewalks. This year there's a lot of postponement.
This, with a sweeper attachment, that would be what would be used along the highway?
Some along the highway, bike paths, we use it for a lot of our dirt road approaches. So you got gravel, you know, the state will pave the approach. So say it's in 10 foot. So as you grade or cars come throughout the summer, that gravel spreads onto the gravel and then we're able to sweep that, you know, so it's not a pickup room. It's just move it from left to right or push it forward, kind of a situation.
Cause I saw somebody out there yesterday sweeping and out there on Sterling. And the rate he was going and the rate of the, how much gravel that's on that sidewalk could be out there until the next snowfall in September or October. Anything else?
Equipment replacement fund. All right, moving on. One more fund? One more fund, debt service fund, big one, but an easy one. This is the fund that we pay the debt service for our bonds out of. It's funded by general fund transfers into the fund and then the payment for the debt service comes out of this fund. So new to this fund in this year is the debt service on the first tranche of the field house bonds. So on page 91, you'll see the debt service on the library bond issuance. And then on 92, you'll see the debt service on the field house bonds. So it's an increase in FY24 budget of about 582,000.
How much longer do we have on the library one?
I think those, we refinanced them in 2020, so is it 2030? I believe so. I think it's 2030, 2031, one of those.
Any questions about debt service? Saying no, move on to the next project.
That's, that's the end of the budget presentation. It's an honor to be in the position to present our recommendations. And if you have any questions before Friday, feel free to reach out to me or Melanie or after Friday, please reach out to Melanie.
Are there any general questions from the council on anything on the budget right now?
If there are any changes that you would like to propose in the budget, if there's any way you could let us know so that we can come prepared to the public hearing, that would be great. Much appreciated.
So this will be presented at the May 10th meeting and we'll have it up for public hearing approval at May 24. Anything else? Saying nothing, then we'll go ahead and adjourn this work session.
And our next meeting is tomorrow night?